Okay, we're recording.
Thank you. Call the meeting, the January 25th meeting of the Town Plan, Fairfield Town Plan and Zoning Commission. First order of business is bills and communications. May I have a motion?
Your first time is actually the minutes of January the 11th, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, it is. My mistake. January the 11th, minutes. I think you're, I think that's you, Commissioner Francis. You're on mute, though.
Sorry. Move to approve the minutes of January 11th, 22.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bremen? Commissioner Francis?
All set.
All set on your end? Commissioner Bremen, anything?
The good.
Any other commission members? No? Okay, we'll call to a vote then. All those in favor of approving, please say aye or raise your hand. Count six. Or did I miss, was it seven? I missed. Well, we've run this. Anybody, any opposed? Any abstentions? Being done, passes unanimously. In one second, I lost the agenda here. There we go. Okay. New applications for recommendation to public hearing, 1-59 Post Road. Special exception and coastal site plan application of One Post Road Fairfield LLC. Pertaining the construction of a daycare facility in the design commercial district.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Went, for the record, this, this property, these are side by side properties. One Post Road is the site of a present office building. It's the, depending on which way you're traveling, it's either the last building on the south side of the Post Road before you cross over Ash Creek into Black Rock, or it's the first property on the left as you cross from Black Rock into Bridgeport. 59 Post Road is adjacent to it directly across the street from the Grassmere Avenue intersection. There was a one-story retail building there that was demolished when the commission, a couple of years ago, approved a proposal for a 20-unit apartment building. They are now proposing to join these sites together, maintain the office building, but build a new daycare facility. So what this application is, is a special exception coastal site plan for new construction of a daycare and does require a public hearing.
May I have a motion? Commissioner Francis, move to public hearing?
Yes, move to.
Any seconds? Commissioner Levy, I think beat Commissioner Ford by a bit. Seconds to motion. Public hearings required. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. That looked to be unanimous, but any opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. Next item is zoning regulations amendments. Application of the Economic Development Commission to amend sections 12.3.15, 12.14, 12.5.15, 13.14.2, 21.16.3.12, 28.6.12 regarding outdoor dining. Mr. Went?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the presently our regulations in section 28.6.12, as you may know, allow the first 150 feet of outdoor dining to not require any additional parking. With the experience that we have lived through these past couple of years and our administrative allowance to allow restaurants to operate a little bit more liberally during this pandemic has been quite a laboratory in terms of how that's worked out for them and what, what the impacts are. The short end, the, the short, make the short, the Economic Development Commission is requesting the commission's consideration to amend our regulations to make it to again liberalize, make more formal some of the issues that we've done administratively to allow restaurants to have a little bit bigger footprint of outdoor dining without any additional parking. It is a regulation amendment. We will be sharing it with you in the near future, but it does require public hearing.
Thank you. May I have a motion for this? Commissioner Harrison? Move to a public hearing? Second, Commissioner Ford? Does require a public hearing. Anything further? All those in favor, move to public hearing, say aye or raise your hand. Any opposed? Abstentions? Being done, passes unanimously. Next item is Old Business. 83 Castle Avenue. Zoning compliance application of Berwick Associates LLC pertaining, pertaining to a 43-unit residential development pursuant to section 8-30G of the Connecticut General Statutes in the resident C-zone.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Jim Went, again, for the record, this site is a .57 acre parcel on the southeastern corner of the intersection of Castle Avenue and Berwick Avenue. Site's in a resident C-zone and abuts residential uses on three sides in the commercial shopping center at 500 Kings Highway to the east. The proposal is for a 43-unit set aside development pursuant to section 8-30G of the Connecticut General Statutes where 30% of the units must be deed restricted as below market rate units. The 43 units are proposed to be comprised of 13 studio units, 18 one-bedroom units and 12 two-bedroom units amounting to 55 total bedrooms. The 13 below market rate units will be comprised of four studio units, six one-bedroom units and three two-bedroom units. New concrete sidewalks are proposed along both street frontages of Berwick and Castle. Concrete curbs are existing. The site grades on this site along Berwick Avenue fronting this piece range from a high of elevation 29 and slopes down towards the Castle Avenue intersection at elevation 24. The site also slopes gently from Berwick Avenue towards the adjacent commercial property, which is adjacent to this, is the rear parking lot for Town Fair Tire. The proposal is to excavate the higher elevations of the site down to an elevation of approximately 20 to have grade level parking beneath the building with four occupied stories above the first floor. The first floor elevation will be at elevation 30 and the height of the building along Berwick Avenue is at its highest elevation, 44 feet in height and then slopes down along the adjacent grade to a height of 47 feet as that slope drops along the street frontage. The height at the flat part of the rear portion of the building, the lowest part of the site would be 52 feet. There are a total of 57 parking spaces proposed or 1.33 spaces per unit or 1.04 spaces per bedroom. The traffic report indicates that the proposed, proposal is estimated to result in 34 morning peak hour vehicle trips and 50 trips in the evening peak hour. The levels of service at all impacted intersections according to the report will remain unchanged. Although the report indicates there's adequate sight lines for the proposed driveway, the applicant's traffic engineer recommended that stop signs be added at this intersection at the Castle Avenue legs. There's presently a stop sign at Berwick in the, engineers recommending that stop signs be added at Castle Avenue legs and as was discussed, that's a recommendation that would need to advance that the police commission for their ultimate review and approval. The engineering department is satisfied with the proposed drainage plan and also agrees that adequate sight lines are provided and also discussed and noted at the hearing is recommended that a portion of the proposed retaining wall that's adjacent to the entry drive be moved five feet southerly because there's a fence on top of that, so that would not interfere with the sight line and the applicant indicated that they could accommodate that. At the request of the commission, following the, the public hearing, we followed up with the conservation and engineering staff. The conservation staff reports that there are no wetlands or watercourses on or adjacent to this site and this was based on past reviews, not only for this project, but for a daycare facility that was originally proposed in 1999 but never constructed. The engineering department also researched the, this matter and found no evidence of a spring or water course on the property. The fire marshal provided and expanded, expanded on his initial email of November 30th to confirm that there is satisfactory emergency vehicular access to this site. Concerns were raised during the hearing regarding existing on-street parking. On the opposite sides of Castle and Berwick, actually, there was some testimony that at times they park on both sides. That condition in further discussion with the fire marshal warrants the recommendation that parking be prohibited along the frontage of both streets on the applicant's side of the site. This is a recommendation, I think it would amount equally to the recommendation of the traffic engineer that if, if this is going to move forward, that in addition to a recommendation that stop signs be installed on Castle Avenue, we would also recommend that the parking, that the frontage of this site be posted as no parking and that would be reviewed by ultimately the fire marshal's input to the, to the police commission. The standards for a review of an affordable housing application differ from a typical zoning application, as you are aware. For a denial of an affordable housing application to be sustained, the burden is on the commission to prove based on evidence in the record compiled before the commission that the decision from which an appeal may be taken and the reasons cited for the decision are supported by sufficient evidence in the record. The commission shall also have the burden to prove that A, the decision is necessary to protect substantial public interest in health, safety or other matters which the commission may legally consider. B, that such public interest clearly outweighs the need for affordable housing. And C, such public interest cannot be protected by reasonable changes to the proposed development. Court cases have indicated that record must establish more than a mere possibility of harm to a substantial public interest. The record must contain evidence as to a quantifiable probability that a specific harm will result if the application is granted and mere concerns alone do not amount to sufficient evidence to support a denial of an affordable housing regulation. And that comes from, this is something we've quoted before from prior court cases. That is all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman, subject to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Went. May I have a, may I have a motion on this? Commissioner Levy? You're on mute.
I would move to approve with the conditions as far as moving the retaining wall five feet as the applicant has agreed. Along with a recommendation that parking along the site, site frontage on Berwick and Castle be eliminated and also the recommendation to add the stop signs at the intersection.
So the retaining walls, the condition of approval and the last two, the parking and the signage are recommendations?
Correct. That would be, I assume appropriately before the police commission.
Thank you. Is the, may I have a second? Is there a second? Commissioner Ford, thank you. Commissioner Levy?
Yes, again, this is an 830G application. I appreciate and listen to the concerns of the neighbors regarding the parking situation, which is existing there. But based upon the record, I do not feel that there's sufficient evidence as to any potential public harm which would outweigh the need for additional affordable housing. And based upon all of the conditions, you know, including having evidence of an identifiable and likely harm as opposed to a mere concern or possibility that based upon the statutory criteria, this meets the necessary criteria for approval of an 830G application.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Commissioner Ford has second.
I mean, I, it's difficult to argue with the legal analysis by my fellow commissioner. I agree, there wasn't any, anything that led to any kind of harmful thought. The only, my only concern was the tree and the sight lines, but they kind of addressed that as well. If this wasn't an 8-30G, I would vote to, I would vote no. I would vote to not approve this project. I understand the neighbors, I've heard them loud and clear. I mean, I, I drove down this street a day before our last meeting just to take a look and eyeball it. And I, you know, I, I understand what they're saying with the parking of both sides of the street will be very difficult. So I think, you know, our recommendation of having the stop sign is very important. We can't order it, but I hope the applicant will go forward with the police commission and whoever else they need to, to get that done. I mean, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm new to the commission. I, I was an alternate before and these applications are going to continue to come in and our hands are tied. And for everyone who's kind of listening to this meeting, everyone online or listening to it later, your, your beef is with the Connecticut legislature. It is with Laura Devlin, Tony Wong, Jennifer Leeper, Kristin McCarthy-Wehhe locally. Write them, call them and explain to them that, you know, these buildings don't fit in these, in these close knit neighborhoods. I think a classic, a great example of an 8-30G application is on Unka Place. You know, I, it fits, it blends into the local area. So, but again, the commission, our hands are tied and there's no legal reason, in my opinion, to turn down this application and that is why I second it, but with those comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Harrison? I think you're on mute.
Should know by now, two years into this, right? In any case, I, I understand that we're, you know, here to vote on this application tonight. You know, I thought about this a lot the last week and I really feel like this commission is at a disadvantage because I, I feel like we simply don't have adequate information to render an educated one. You know, during the public hearing, we heard testimony from the neighbors about current street congestion before this development and before the recently approved 20-unit apartment building down the street, which is caused by overflow parking from both the residents, commercial, truck traffic, congestion brought on by the dealerships. As of tonight, we don't have any safety reports from the fire departments on the safety issue. When you profoundly change a neighborhood, that they are not, at least new, new issues. I don't have any substantial information either way. I'm also concerned over the issue of school bus stops, emergency access to handicapped children and a high level from pedestrian traffic with no sidewalks in this area of Longfellow, Berwick and Castle avenues, as well as both traffic and overflow parking. You know, I understand that 830G is different. I get that. But I don't think the general assembly, when they passed this in 1990, that they envisioned that we would be rendering decisions with, with that, with just not enough information. You know, as commissioners, we're charged with protecting the health and safety of our fellow residents. And that, and just because this is an 830G doesn't mean we aren't entitled to detailed information or safety reports. That's it. You know, I, I didn't see any reason why we had to put a hold on the, or we had to suspend or stop the public hearing last time. I think there's a lot more information that we need to render good, a good decision for the town. I heard a lot of issues from the neighborhood, from the neighbors. One neighbor said that they were, they had asked the fire marshal to come down. We never heard an update about that. Did that happen? But the public hearing is closed and I don't think that can be brought into the record now. The neighbors know their neighborhood best. They live there. They're aware of the nuances. I also have a question, you know, there's a lot of issues here. We don't want another Beacon Square. A few weeks ago, you know, we, we were probably on the path of passing an 830G on Beacon Square, but because this commission raised safety issues, that was withdrawn. I don't want another Beacon Square. We dodged a bullet. I think we need to be smart and just because this is 830G doesn't mean we have to necessarily pass it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harrison. Commissioner Braun?
I agree with what both the prior commissioners have stated. I, I do agree that 8-30G gives the impression of tying our hands, but I don't think we should be satisfied with having our hands tied. I don't think we should be satisfied if we're not fully informed and I, I agree with, with Commissioner Harrison. I don't think the state legislature intended for us to push forward, approve permanent changes to the landscape that could affect health, safety and welfare of our residents. If we feel we need more information, if the residents that are fact witnesses to 30 years of development activity and flooding and springs bursting forth, whatever happened, parking on both sides of the roads, inadequate access, I feel that we should rely on some expertise of our own. If, if the neighbors aren't able to cobble together the money to hire experts, we need to get expertise other than the applicant and I, I repeat what Commissioner Harrison said about Beacon Square. We did not hear any experts. We had a prolonged discussion on the record of of neighbors complaining about inadequate access and parking problems. And then the hearing was closed and that probably would have been approved because we heard no experts saying there was a problem. It wasn't till after the hearing was closed that the fire marshal apparently got better information and something was done behind the scenes and it was withdrawn. We probably were on track to approve that because we didn't have, we didn't have the information of this problem, the safety issue. I don't want to make that mistake ever again, that we don't have adequate information. So when the neighbors raise something, they're fact witnesses. They know what's been going on. On the fire department email we got, that's, it's a start. It's not the ending of the inquiry. The start is, yes, it appears there's access. I don't know what was looked at. I don't know if they talked to the neighborhood or if this email was in response to the neighbor's request for the fire marshal and the police department to go out there and investigate it. Or if it's in response to just a simple question, do you have access? Because if you're really looking at cars parking on both sides and inadequate access, that might be a different question than what was asked. I don't know. And I'd like a, a chance to do some Q and A with our own public officials that are the only experts we have at our disposal to, to delve, do more of a deep dive into things like this before we approve a permanent change to an already congested neighborhood, which already is having a 20-unit 8-30G going down the road on the other end of Castle Avenue. And we heard on that one and on this one about commercial traffic, commercial trucks parking on the road and everything else. And now getting rid of, we've already, at the hearing that we had on this application, it was already determined that they weren't going to have parking on Berwick for this development. Now it looks as though there's a suggestion that we don't have parking on Castle Ave. I guess that's subject to police approval, but I wonder how does that affect everybody that's parking on the street now? I don't understand how that would affect them. And I think we need more information to know, does this create more of a problem by getting rid of parking on the road? I don't know. We need more information. So the bottom line is I need better information and if it's not provided during the course of the hearing, I don't see how I can render a decision that promotes the health and safety and welfare of, of our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Braun. I have some comments as well, but I'll let anyone else talk, go first. Commissioner Bremen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While, you know, we are all mindful of the standard under 8-30G, I think this commission has not hesitated in the past when there has been a concern that rises to the level of a consideration that under 8-30G allows us, requires us to deny an application. We have not ever shied away from our responsibility to deny an application or to condition it. And I take our responsibilities very seriously, both in terms of the 8-30G standard and the law, but also our responsibility to protect public safety. I'm persuaded not necessarily by giving, you know, credibility to everything that the applicant has, has said without questioning it, but largely by reliance on our own town officials and experts, our, our in-house experts, if you will, that this application will not create any harm or new quantifiable risk of harm to public safety. I was persuaded by the email from Fire Marshal Phil Higgins. Did not see any problem with emergency access or risk of from a fire perspective. Persuaded by the email from our town engineer Laura Pooley about specific issues that should be corrected and that have been corrected in the application with respect to sight lines in terms of the, the fence and the retaining wall and the, the tree. Was persuaded by the email from Mr. Lehman about the search for any evidence of underground spring or, or water that didn't, didn't uncover a record of it. And the, the, the comments also from Sarah Nifsey, the conservation department who sits as the inland wetlands agency said that there was no issue from her perspective with respect to inland wetlands or conservation. So I, I recognize that, you know, there's always an opportunity for us to further inquire and get additional information, but I am satisfied that we have done our duty, that we've gotten the information that we need in order to assure ourselves there, there is not a risk to public safety that would justify the, the step of denying this application, which again, we have not hesitated to take when we have needed to take that. And, and I do recognize the, the issues with the 8-30G statute and standard. I note that, that, you know, we, we appear to be close to moratorium on 8-30G. And I think that all things taken into consideration, especially the careful review that we have all done of the number of emails from the neighbors and the careful job that we've done listening to the neighbors whose voices are extremely important to our decision. I think that I'm persuaded that this application must under the law be approved with the conditions as stated by staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Bremen. Commissioner Francis?
I agree with Commissioner Ford. If it weren't an 830G, I wouldn't, couldn't support it. It's, it's such a small plot of land. It looks like your backyard, for heaven's sakes. It's going to have 55 bedrooms, 43 units. It's and it's sloping and it slopes the other way. It's, it's just, you just sit there and look at it and can't believe it. I don't know. I wonder if we can consider the health and safety of the people who are going to have to live there listen to all that we've heard from the neighbors. It's certainly very difficult, but I have to agree, there's, there's nothing on the record that can threaten the health and safety currently, so I have to support it.
Commissioner Braun, and then I'd like to jump in. Commissioner Braun?
So the fire marshal, like I said, is a start, but it didn't address issues that were raised by the people who live in the area. For example, people who live in the multifamily development across the road at 94-128, they park in the street during snow, hazardous conditions on their own driveway. So is this going to eliminate parking for them on the road? Is this going to potentially create a problem that we don't know about? I'd like to have a more detailed report from the fire department where we know they actually addressed the questions being raised by the neighbors who have lived there for the last decades, who know about the problems and the need for parking on the street and what will happen if we remove parking from the street. So I, I just feel like we're entitled to have the information we need to avoid a health or safety or welfare issue in our town. And what would have happened on Beacon Square? If we hadn't raised this issue post-hearing with the fire marshal and he changed his position, what if that hadn't happened? Well, it probably would have been approved and we would have been approving a safety hazard in our town. I'm not willing to do that. I want more information on a more detailed level. I would like to know that the, the specific 13 points raised on this neighbor's memo here are addressed. Maybe not everyone relates to traffic and parking, but a lot of them do. And I would really like to have a slightly better investigation of whether there's a spring on the site. When things are not mapped, I don't know what the conservation department's obligations are. If it's not mapped and nobody knows there's something there, does that mean it doesn't exist? I'd like to have a little bit more in-depth discussion on that also. So from my perspective, I feel like we're entitled to more information and I do not believe our state legislature intended for us to approve things if we feel we do not have adequate information. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Braun. I, I do feel like, and I appreciate Commissioner Bremen outlining his points and pointing to the record that we have sufficient information in the record. It may not be a detailed memo outlining particulars that most, some, that It may not be a detailed memo outlining particulars that people would prefer, but I'm not so sure that, A, you're going to get the information that you seek from the fire marshal about how it'll affect on-street parking. The fire marshal is concerned about fire access. And the question was asked, and he and his expertise reviewed it, and I won't sit here and tell you I know exactly what he did because I don't, but he's made the, he's given us his opinion that there's sufficient fire access and has only asked for a recommendation as opposed to a condition of approval, a recommendation about the park, eliminating parking on the frontage. I'm not, this is, we've, as far as I understand, this is what we've always done, we've conducted these hearings, is we gather the information as we did. And also the information from our own town experts are provided in the applicant's own application with code review minutes and things along those lines. We get the input early in, and our town and their experts are getting, they're getting input with the application early before they even come to us with code enforcement minutes and whatever other discussions that they have. So we do get it from our experts, from, as Commissioner Brayman said, in-house experts. And they give us the answer, you know, maybe not as detailed as we would like, and maybe there are ways in the future where we can extend the hearings an extra week or so. I've discussed this with staff already, and should it come to fruition, I'll call it the Mark Corcoran rule, like he was the one who gave me the idea, to extend these, to keep the public hearings open an extra week to allow for the public and for us to get more information. This couldn't happen now. We were in this application, unfortunately, with Chick-fil-A put up right against the time limit. We could have put an extra hearing in between now and our last hearing, but we were right up against the deadline in this case. In this instance, statutorily, we had no choice as far as timing to go forward. I'll quickly say about Beacon Hill. I think we did all we could on Beacon Hill before even Commissioner Ford made his request at the end of the public hearing. It was just a confirmation of what had already been known or already thought at the time. The fire commissioner and the applicant's engineer had worked and worked on this and whether there was fire access needed on the Beacon Hill. And it was a second review and, you know, an oh-my-God-I-miss-something moment. And that's very important. We should always be doing that, but I don't think it had to do with the fact that we were moving too quickly or not getting the information. It was just a second look caused a revision of opinion that was already rightfully in place, and I'm glad it worked out the way it did. We did the same process in this case, in this application. We went to our own experts to seek their final approval, final review and final approval. They provided it. It was not a ten-page detailed memo. And as I said, I'm not sure that the fire marshal would be inclined to determine what, how off-street parking is affected by either taking parking away or whatever the circumstances are, because his purview is fire access, similar to how with the conservation, their jurisdiction is inland, is waterways. They don't have it listed. They don't have any record of it. So it's hard to, it's hard, if not impossible, to order another agency to do something that they've determined there's no jurisdiction on. I acknowledge that it's an odd testimony. It was robbery that there was water flowing from the land. That's something we don't hear often, and it caught my attention. But I will say that when they're building their foundation and they hit water, they're going to have to account for it. They're not going to just keep going, I would think. They're going to have to, and that would probably, would probably trigger jurisdiction at that point, to the extent that anybody thinks we need to have some kind of recommendation or something put in this application to say if you strike water, an unforeseen waterway, you have to go back to the town or to us, that's fine, but I think that would have to happen anyway. So I apologize for being a little long-winded, but ultimately, I do believe we have sufficient information. The burden is as high as everybody said, and I don't believe that there's sufficient evidence to deny this application as is. And based on every, you know, my experience with this, this, excuse me, this commission, we've done, we've done as we normally have, we've done our due diligence as we normally have, and as Commissioner Brayman rightly said, we will and have put forth denials when we believe, when the commission believes that there are substantial health and safety risks. And I believe that there is not, the evidence does not support that denial at this point. Commissioner Wynn, is it fair to say, though, if they hit a waterway, they're going to have to come back to the town? Or whatever, for some kind of alleviation, where to go move forward or something like that?
Yeah, if you're directing that to me, Mr. Chairman, yes. In any application, any construction project, there's always the possibility that someone encounters something that wasn't anticipated, and if that is the case, they need to address it by, and if that rises to the level of changes to the plan or something that triggers a new jurisdictional impact, that would be judged at that time. So I think as a matter of course, if that, that's what would occur. If there is some spring that they hit in their excavation, they're going to have to stop and deal with, deal with that. And whether or not that triggers any other jurisdictional issues by any other agency will be determined at that time depending on what's encountered.
Thank you, Mr. Wynn. Commissioner Braun?
I just want to note and recall that we were told that the whole site had test pits all through it, but when you looked at the actual plans on the drainage report, there were only four test pits and they were all along the side of the property. So there could be ample areas where there could be a spring that they didn't test for.
Oh, no doubt. Commissioner Braun, you're absolutely right. And I do believe they said, though, they did test pits where the drainage basins were going to be, not necessarily sampled throughout the entire project. But I do believe they said that it was going to be where the basins were, which is, if you're looking at the project to the left, unless I'm misremembering that. I do remember them saying that, but you're absolutely right. It was in that area, and that leaves the right side open, so to speak, if there is Any other commissioners? Commissioner Francis?
You're on mute, Commissioner Francis.
Sorry, I had it on unmute. Will we be making it a condition of approval that the parking spaces along the property site on both Burwick and Castle will be removed? The police commission will remove them? And if they choose not to, will this be a condition of approval?
It is, and Commissioner Levy, you'll correct me if I'm wrong. It is not a condition of approval. It is a recommendation at this point. And as I understand it-
Do we have the authority to make it a condition of approval? And if the police commission denies it?
I would think, Commissioner Wentz, please correct me if I'm wrong. If we, and Commissioner Brayman, as I think opined on this in the past, if you believe that the removal of the parking spaces is needed in order to remedy what would otherwise be a substantial harm, then we could make that a condition of approval if you-
I think so.
If you make the finding that the parking is needed in such a way. Mr. Wentz, is that fairly accurate?
Yeah, I think there's two, two levels to this. One is that the, for better fire access, it was the fire marshal's opinion that restricting the parking would be appropriate, but going to Commissioner Braun's concerns about what the ultimate impact is, that process is properly before the police commission, and they will take into account the recommendation of the fire marshal in conjunction with any other information that they get from the neighbors in terms of what, okay, what's the impact of removing that parking? Is that what's, what's, what's a safer condition, having it posted for no parking? Or if it is consistently used for parking presently and those folks need to park someplace else, what are the impacts there? And I think that's properly before the police commission and fire commission. So you can do it as a recommendation, our letter, what we typically do and what would happen in this case if it is a recommendation is, we would write a letter to the police chief requesting the police commission and the applicant be before them and the reasons why we're making that recommendation. But you were also correct that if you think there's substantial evidence that supports that this project, in the absence of that restriction, should not go forward, then you can make that a condition of approval.
Thank you. Yeah. Personally, I think that that recommendation almost has to be followed because you drive down the street and there's parking on one side and my car takes up most of the rest of it. There really isn't room for two cars to park and cars to pass each other. It's a narrow street. So I would be, I would recommend that we make it a condition of approval, and the police commission probably will approve it. Once you visit it, you can feel it. Thank you.
Commissioner Levy, request has been made. I think you heard it. Your thoughts?
I think you're on mute. Yep.
Yep. My thoughts are that there's nothing in the record whereby the parking issue, one way or the other, rises to posing a substantial risk or public, you know, of public harm or safety issues. And that the issue as to whether there should or should not be parking and the safety concerns with respect to fire access, that's appropriately something that should be determined by the police commission, which is charged with that responsibility. So I'd be, I would not agree to make it other than a recommendation with the hope that the police commission will investigate further and at the appropriate time make a determination in the best interests of the public.
Thank you. And my understanding of the marshal was, he was making a recommendation. In the past, I believe, the marshal and even the police commissioner have always been forthcoming with the idea of a recommendation versus a need. We saw that on Beach Road, I believe, with the police commissioner or some, maybe Beach Road's a bad example if that was a different purpose, but that's my experience, is they've always understood that difference. And Mr. Wentz, I assume that the, well, let me ask you. When the fire marshal had said that it was a recommendation, it was, again, the difference between a recommendation and not a need. Is that fair?
Yes. And in the process going forward is, you know, the fire marshal's going to be involved in that discussion with the police commission as to the appropriateness of that recommendation. You know, that his, the testimony that we heard gave rise to us asking, to me asking if he thought that that would be an appropriate condition. His answer, yes, is he thought it would, because it would make it, make access for their vehicles easier. But, you know, I've seen it too. I mean, there are, you know, if, I think it would be challenging along the frontage of this site if they were parking on both sides. I think the applicant recognizes that their site plan, it's hard to see, is proposing no parking signs on that side of the street themselves. So, but again, as Mr. Levy said, the, you know, that, you know, the fire marshal will have input into that process, and they'll have to balance the access issue versus the needs of the neighborhood for on-street parking.
Thank you. And it was a fair point on the applicant's part to note that regardless of the neighbors, I remember the driveway being problematic, but they did have a driveway, they did have ability to park in the driveway, however mitigated that may be against design laws. And I thought that was a fair point to make. Or at least for that one particular property. Any other commissioners? So on the table is a motion to approve with the condition of approval of moving back the retaining wall and two recommendations that the stop signs be placed, the two stop signs be placed, and preventing parking along the frontage of the property. And I'm sure I'm a little more ambiguous than what's actually that, but Mr. Wentz, you understand the motion that's on the table?
I do, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Does anybody, any issues with how I phrased it? It may not be perfect, but, okay. So that's the motion.
I think, I think it was pretty accurate. You've got the condition that the, the portion of retaining wall be moved back five feet and the recommendation that the stop signs be added on the Castle Avenue legs and the no parking provision. So that's, that's exactly the motion.
Okay. Thank you. So that's the motion on the table.
With no parking, again, that's still going to be a recommendation, or did you say that there's none on Castle Avenue per the applicant?
No, it's, they were proposing on their plan parking, but it's a recommendation.
Well, as I stand, it's a recommendation. So the motion on the table is, as I've stated, all those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Commissioners Noonan, Levy, Brayman and Ford, all opposed. Commissioners Harrison, Braun and Francis. Motion to approve with the conditions and recommendations as stated passes for three. That brings us to our public hearing. First item, I will call the first two items together as they're related and connected. Zoning Regulation Amendment, application of fourteen zero one King LLC to amend section thirteen point fourteen point two of zoning regulations, permitted uses in the transit-oriented development park to allow dog care uses to include overnight boarding, daycare, grooming and training. And the next, again, fourteen zero one King's Highway, zoning compliance application of fourteen zero one King LLC to establish a dog daycare, overnight boarding, daycare, grooming and training use in a portion of an existing building, design commercial district in the transit-oriented developments park.
That's mine, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
I can, Attorney Fitzpatrick. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, my name is Bill Fitzpatrick. I'm an attorney in Fairfield with the law firm of Fitzpatrick, Ray and Bologna. I'm here this evening representing fourteen oh one King LLC, which includes as members Scala Partners LLC and Abbey Road Ventures LLC. With me tonight are Ari Kudavides from Scala Partners and Ross Ogden from Abbey Road. They represent the various ownership entities for the property in question. The application before the commission tonight is actually two separate applications. The first is a regulation amendment adding an additional permitted use to section thirteen point fourteen point two, which lists the permitted uses for the transit-oriented development park. The permitted use which is proposed to be added to the TODP is, quote, "dog care uses to include pet services such as overnight boarding, daycare, grooming and training," end quote. The purpose of this regulation amendment is to add a dog daycare use as a permitted use in this mixed-use district- daycare use as a permitted use in this mixed-use district. As such, this amendment is limited to the transit oriented development park and would not extend this type of dog care use to other zones in Fairfield, but simply to the TODP, which would seem to be a particularly appropriate place for commuters or travelers utilizing the railroad station to have the opportunity to avail themselves of the dog daycare use on their way to the train and coming home on the train. The second component of the application is a certificate of zoning compliance for the proposed dog daycare use, in this case known as Dogtopia of Fairfield. A property which is the subject of the zone compliance application is 4.66 acres, located at the corner of Commerce Drive and King's Highway. This area, which has the address of 1401 King's Highway, was approved as a transit oriented development park in 2018. The purpose of the transit oriented development park, as set forth in your regulations, section 13.14.1, is quote, "to enable the development of a transit supportive, mixed-use neighborhood within walking distance of the commuter rail transit, of a scale and design that is appropriate to the existing neighborhood context and the character of the town," end quote. Development of this site, which was originally known to me as Trademark Two and has now been branded as Alto, consists of mixed-use buildings with a base floor of retail and office uses and four floors of residential apartments. The two residential buildings about a parking structure between them to address the parking needs. The residential units include 20 studios, 84 one-bedrooms and 56 two-bedroom units. Site also includes two existing office buildings, 777 Commerce Drive, a brick structure fronting on Commerce Drive and 1375 King's Highway, which is located at the corner of Commerce Drive and King's Highway. The parking demand for the various uses on-site, including the existing buildings, totals 542 spaces. The parking provided was a total of 617 spaces, in excess of the requirement, including 517 in the parking garage. The proposed Dogtopia use is located at the easterly end of the first floor of the 1401 King's Highway building, which is the building that wraps at the corner of King's Highway and Ash Creek Boulevard. The proposed use, a dog daycare center, seems particularly appropriate for the town of Fairfield, which is a dog-friendly town. There are annually over 3,000 dog licenses issued in the town of Fairfield, 2,879 so far this year, which ends on June 30, and which is certainly significantly short of the actual number of dogs in town. In addition, there are 34 dogs presently in the Trademark One and Alto Apartments. To outline for you the specifics of the proposed Dogtopia use, I'd like to introduce Ms. Kayla Sealy and Jim Riley, who will outline that use for you. Kayla.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you, Attorney Fitzpatrick. Uh, my name is Kayla Sealy, uh, representing Red Barn Dog Ops Connecticut. Uh, address is 855 Main Street, Bridgeport, Connecticut, 06604. Uh, and I am going to share my screen here for what I believe was a presentation that was shared with each of you. Uh, hopefully you can all see that. Great. Uh, so this is for, uh, as Attorney Fitzpatrick mentioned, for the Dogtopia of Fairfield proposed site at 1401 King's Highway. For the Dogtopia difference, essentially our primary focus is on socialization and exercise through daycare as our primary use. For our noble cause, uh, to enhance the joy of dog parenthood and enable dogs to positively change our world, essentially we want our pups to be able to play all day and go home tired. Now, I'm going to walk you through, uh, how we build trust within our community, uh, by explaining our approach to safety, design, training, operational excellence, as well as the support system that we have in place. So first, starting off with our certifications, uh, we have Dogtopia specific certifications for canine coaches, which are those that spend the day with our pups within the playrooms. Those are certified both by the IAA VC and the CCPVT, uh, our Heroes for Helping Pets program, which is very much focused on, uh, both illness and helping wellness with the pets. Uh, and as far as what we offer within the facility, we have our webcams, which are available to our pet parents at all times. Uh, and we are also a locally owned and community-centered business, uh, with a better franchise support. When we go to our neighbors, uh, Dogtopia has over 160 locations throughout the United States. We are the largest franchisee within the system with 19 current operating units. Our closest location to Fairfield would be our Norwalk location. Uh, and in addition to that, uh, we also have the job creation of about 20 to 25, uh, positions within our facility. Um, and we are very excited to bring this business to the pups within Fairfield to create better canine services. Safety is our number one focus within Dogtopia, uh, at all times. Our approach to safety, first and foremost, as I mentioned before, our certified canine coaches go through a training program, uh, which is accredited by the International Association of Animal Behavior Consultants, as well as the Certification Council for Professional Dog Trainers. We, our safety experts also include an environmental biologist, a veterinary scientist, as well as a canine behaviorist. We go through an extensive evaluation with all of our pups. So when a pet parent is looking for our services, uh, the first step in that process is to bring them in for what we refer to as a meet and greet. And during the meet and greet, not only does the pet parent get a chance to tour our facility, uh, including the playrooms, uh, the areas in which, you know, meals are prepped for the pups, as well as the dog also goes through a temperament evaluation. So during that time, we evaluate the dog for what their play style is, how well they play with other pups, uh, do they have any hesitations, uh, towards any other dogs of different sizes or different temperament, uh, in order to make sure that they are a good fit for our open play area. Our room assignment, uh, is divided between three play, uh, three playrooms, which is separated by both size and temperament. So our toy box, uh, is dedicated to our smallest pups. We also offer a romper room, which is more so for medium to large dogs, which may have more of an adolescent play style. So those that are typically between ages one, one and a half to about three years old. And then our gym, which is also our medium to large dogs, uh, that have learned more of their social behaviors, uh, and are more comfortable within that setting. In addition, uh, we also offer, uh, the wholesale crates, which allow us to offer naps to the dogs, feeding, uh, within the day or for breakfast or dinner, as well as certain rest breaks and overnight stays as well. And then later we'll also address, uh, the cleaning products that we use, the rubberized flooring that's within our playrooms, our HVAC systems, webcams, and also the support system that we have overall. So for the design of our facilities, um, I would say that our design is much different than what most people think of as a typical, uh, kennel type of facility. Our facilities are bright, they're clean, they're welcoming. We take pet parents behind the door. So where typically your experience may have been in the past, you walk into the lobby or whatever you would typically bring your pup into and everything kind of stops at the desk. We move beyond that and we take people behind the door. So we offer our pet parents the tours. We have windows that they can look into the playrooms. Uh, we also offer the webcams, as I mentioned earlier. So whenever their pup is in open play, uh, throughout the week, throughout the day, they're able to check in on them and see all the fun things that they're doing there. Uh, we also have the rubberized floors, which is great for both their paws and their joints. Uh, our HVAC system, which offers 100% fresh air exchange. And then in addition to that, we also have the Dogtopia Foundation. So the Dogtopia Foundation is something that all Dogtopia locations support. However, each location also has a dedicated goal to sponsor a service dog for veterans. Uh, so in order for them to sponsor the service dog for veterans, they have a certain fundraising goal. Uh, we've been able to provide these service dog for veterans free of charge to them, uh, but also support children's literacy programs and adults with autism. Our design, as you walk into the facility, you'll notice is very bright and modern. Uh, we have, you know, all of our decor throughout, which is, you know, also part of the experience that the pet parents get to walk through, including very clean and fresh smelling facility, uh, and also making sure that there's transparency throughout. Jim?
Hi, uh, hello, everybody. Um, my name is James Riley, uh, also 855 Main Street in Bridgeport, Connecticut, uh, with Red Barn Dog Ops Connecticut. Uh, we're in the northeast portion of this Alto building. Um, I think there's a, the next slide may show the footprint of our space alongside the restaurant that was approved. The, um, some of the key points, and I'm happy to answer any questions about design and construction, but, uh, the two big things that typically come up, we, we will build, uh, an acoustical envelope within this space. Uh, we've had an acoustical engineer out to the property, uh, conducting measurements and he has put together design specifications for us to, um, successfully isolate a space, uh, and literally have no noise transfer. In particular, the concern would be to the apartments above. This would be our third facility, ours, um, that has mu, multi-story, uh, either residence or office above us, and we've successfully designed, um, to be a good neighbor and, and really have no noise complaints. The other thing that typically comes up or people want to know about, we do have a specialized HVAC system. The playrooms have their own particular HVAC equipment, which, uh, as Kayla mentioned, provides 100% outside air exchange and we exhaust that air, um, and that turns constantly throughout the day. That's it from a, a standpoint, as you can see, the playrooms actually function also as the, the boarding rooms. So those crates, as Kayla mentioned, uh, are kind of multi-use during the day for rest times. Um, boarding is a, is a use that, you know, kind of ebbs and flows. It's got some seasonality to it. Holiday weekends, uh, and, uh, holiday times are, are more peak for boarding than, uh, otherwise throughout the, the course of the year.
When it comes to the operations of the facility, uh, we do have a pet safe cleaning program. So we do use, uh, pet safe cleaning chemicals throughout. We do a thorough sanitization, a minimum of two times a day. Uh, Jim mentioned the HVAC unit earlier. The HVAC unit also has a UV light in it, as well as a Synexa system, which is an antimicrobial defense that, you know, kills everything from canine cough as well as COVID. So it is beneficial to both, uh, the dogs in the space as well as the humans in the space. Uh, we focus very much on illness prevention, as well as everything that we do within the facility is OSHA compliant. When it comes to odor control within the facility, uh, as I mentioned before, our facility smells fresh. So from the moment that you walk in, you won't notice any dog odor, uh, dog odor. Uh, we also use specialized cleaning equipment, which, which is within the facility that includes, uh, backpack vacuums, auto scrubbers, uh, and we also treat odor at the source. So the cleaning chemicals that we use, which are pet safe, uh, anytime that there is, you know, any type of, uh, waste within the playroom, we use a bioenzymatic, uh, digester, which both breaks down the source as well as helps with the odor control, uh, at the source. And then we also double bag all solid waste. So that way there is no issue with any type of odor coming, uh, from the waste within the facility. With our, uh, drop off and pickup for our pet parents, we do also offer curbside service. So our pet parents pull up in front of the facility and our number one focus during that time is safety. So before the pup even gets out of the car, uh, the pup is double leashed during that time. And before the doors opened, we have a second lead with, uh, on the dog, and then we lead them into our facility, drop off for daycare. And I would say the entire process lasts about 90 seconds. The best part is the pet parents can let us know in advance when they're coming. So through the Dogtopia app, they just say, I'll be there in 10 minutes. I'll be there in 15 minutes. We always have someone on standby right at the door, uh, ready to go out to greet their pup. And the same thing works for when they're getting ready to go home.
And if I could just, uh, clarify too, um, when we say front of the facility, that the, the, our door and our entry is actually, uh, on the inside of the project, so facing south, uh, not off of King's Highway. So the, uh, customer access, there's a loading zone, uh, right in front of our store, and then there's surface parking and, and garage parking, all available for our pet parents to commit a drop off.
And then as Jim mentioned before, we have fully investigated, uh, any type of noise control within the facility, which includes the training that we have our canine coaches go through in order to control the amount of, uh, barking within the facility, but also we've measured the levels of barking within the facility to ensure that there would be no disruption to neighboring tenants. And then are there any questions that we can answer for you at this time?
Uh, I have a few questions. Uh, can you just, um, unshare your screen so I can see everybody? Thank you.
Yep.
Before I jump in, uh, does anybody have any questions? Commissioner Braun and then Commissioner Raymond?
Um, and forgive me if you answered this. There's no outdoor space here, right? It's all indoors?
Correct. It is all indoors.
And it says proposed restaurant. Is that a restaurant that's there now or is going to be there? And what's the interrelationship between this business and the restaurant? Is there any issue there with noise or anything like that?
There is not.
The restaurant right in the same building? Is that not going to be there?
The, the restaurant will be there.
Okay.
I believe so. And, and we do, we build, uh, like a five-sided acoustical envelope that will isolate our space completely from a noise standpoint.
I assume it's the same landlord that owns the, the whole building, including the restaurant? So I would assume that they would not allow two uses to take place that would compete with each other, I imagine. Um, and I had a question, maybe more for Jim Went. Um, if we approve the regulation, uh, change, does that, how much discretion does that give us to make decisions in the future if a particular application we might consider too noisy or not good for that particular, uh, you know, block within this district? And also, is there a reason why we don't allow boarding in, for example, the design, uh, neighborhood district? Is there, is boarding different in terms of allowing, um, dog care?
Kathy, can I just interrupt for one second? Do you have both the phone on and your computer?
Sorry, I have my other phone on. I'll, I'll.
Can you move that? So we're getting feedback. Thanks.
Okay. This one's going to die, so I put the other one on. So, yeah, so I had a question. If we approve the zone change, how much leeway do we have in reviewing other applications in the future that might not be as nice as this one? And, um, uh, why don't we allow boarding on some other, uh, the design neighborhood district, for example? There's a difference between boarding and every, all the other, uh, uses for dog care or animal care?
I don't know if the applicant wants to comment after I do. Uh, Jim Went, for the record, the, presently the regulations permit dog daycare only in the design commercial district and in the design industrial district. Um, this, as Attorney Fitzpatrick, um, this proposed, mentioned, this proposal would be limited to the transit oriented development Um, this, as Attorney Fitzpatrick, um, this proposed, mentioned, this proposal would be limited to the transit-oriented development park. The reason boarding is not permitted is the applicant, the, you know, the, the present dog daycare uses in the design commercial and the design industrial were, were by, made by folks that didn't desire boarding. Um, you know, they, they, and there's a requirement in those districts that there not be any adjacency to, um, residential, uh, districts. And, uh, certain amount of outside play area, uh, but they, those two users didn't anticipate or desire uh, in-house kenneling or boarding, so they didn't propose it in, in thought that, I believe, that the provision of, uh, you know, prohibiting boarding might increase their chances, and they didn't propose it in the first place. I don't know if that, if you, if that didn't answer your question, please elaborate and, and we can, we can have a further dialogue of that, but.
So there's no reason not to allow boarding that's based on the fact of boarding. It has to do with the people that applied for the zone change re- in the regulations back then for that, those districts?
Yeah, correct. The, the, the issue of boarding really was never before the commission. It wasn't proposed. Uh, those users didn't propose it, so the commi- it wasn't an, uh, an affirmative action on the commission's part to prohibit it. It just wasn't proposed by those applicants.
And if we approve this zone change, which would apply to all of transit-oriented district, how much leeway do we have in the future to review applications? Does it, do we still have discretion? How much discretion do we have?
Well, the application is proposing a zoning compliance application. The, there's only one other location presently. Um, you know, there may be an expansion of that district. It's an overlay district. Um, so you've got pretty broad discretion in the implementation of those districts, but once established, if you agree with this application, it would be a, um, you know, a, a zoning compliance use versus a special permit use.
Okay, thank you. And what's to say we shouldn't expand it further to allow cat daycare? If we're going to do dog daycare, is there a reason we shouldn't do cat daycare also? Thanks.
I, I'll let the applicant address that question. I don't, I'm not the expert in that regard.
Uh, to my knowledge, as far as I know, uh, the cat daycare business is not as focused because dogs are quite social beings, uh, at their core, and they very much thrives, thrive off of, uh, exercise and socialization. What are your other questions?
Well, attorney, uh, attorney, both attorney and commissioner, uh, Berman is up next, though I will say, I'll give a highlight to mission, uh, to attorney Fitzpatrick. I have a, um, I would be asking later about the language in the amendment because the commissioner Braun's concerns were some that I was echoing uh, about noise and how we can still be able to review these applications should they come in the future, uh, when they become just a zoning compliance as opposed to maybe a special permit. Um, and specifically what language you're looking in the amendment, but, uh, I, commissioner Berman, I jumped ahead, so go ahead.
Oh, no, I just wanted to ask the applicant, um, you know, from an operational perspective, uh, what if any staffing there is overnight?
Yeah, so typically, uh, our team is there until about ten thirty, uh, PM, until about five. Uh, they leave from ten thirty PM until about five AM. So overnight, we monitor the facility remotely, uh, for temperature control, water sensors, motion within the facility. Um, that is our, our standard setup for the overnight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Commissioner Harrison, may I go ahead of you, and then you'll be up next?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, attorney Fitzpatrick, for your regulation amendment, uh, when you look at section thirteen point fourteen point two permitted uses, it essentially just lists the permitted uses. Are you seeking in your regulation amendment to include language along lines of dog daycare uses to include overnight boarding, daycare, grooming, and training? Is that the language you're seeking to include?
The language that I submitted, Mr. Chairman, includes a permitted use in thirteen fourteen point two as follows. Dog care uses to include pet services such as overnight boarding, daycare, grooming, and training. Period.
Okay.
Now, if your point is that because it's a zone compliance, there is some risk that another use might not be as well-run as this one will be. Um, you know, the, I did submit the, uh, a portion of my client's lease with Dogtopia, and, you know, there's language, tenant shall not cause any unreasonably offensive odor or excessively loud noise to emanate outside the premises or perform any act which constitutes a nuisance or menace to any other occupant or persons in the property or disturb the quiet enjoyment of any other tenant. If in some fashion you wish to incorporate that language to give the commission some leeway, um, in the future in reviewing these applications, you know, I don't know that we'd have any objection because I don't think there's any question that, you know, Dogtopia has shown that they will comply with any such, um, metric.
Yeah, I was, because I'm thinking less for this application. I'm thinking ahead. Um, not just the TODP because, uh, in my recollection of all the dog daycares that came to us, uh, they, they always avoided boarding, A, because it may not have been in their business model, but B, the under, kind of under the surface struck me as we were trying to punt the issue down the road because that was going, boarding was going to be the, would be a contentious, potentially contentious issue. And I know this is limited to the DOT, DODP. Um, and we don't set precedent, but we like to be fair and consistent that I have a, I'm going to guess that in the future, we're going to be getting requests from either existing or potential future applications to amend, and they'll be, they'll be looking towards this. And noise abatement and ventilation and odors, um, you know, are going to be an issue at that point. And, yeah, thinking, adding some language in this case for a regulation amendment that said something along the lines of assuming proper noise abatement or ventilation or odor abatement is, uh, is, uh, adhered to or something like that to give it, to give, uh, the commission something to at least protect. Probably not, uh, in this, in this case, but any neighbors and future applications. Uh, maybe, this may be a good time to start that process here. Uh, but it doesn't sound like you have any issues with an attempt stump, uh, along those lines?
That's not the direction I was moving in, Mr. Chairman, simply because, you know, my, my client's the landlord. And the landlord has a great deal of confidence in this proposed tenant. You know, the lease has got specific decibel limits, everything else. And we thought that that's why I submitted the portion of the lease, so the commission could see that my client, the landlord, is not blind to the possibilities here, but has recognized them and, and has included language to protect not only the landlord, but residents upstairs, restaurant next door, et cetera. And, uh, you know, we feel very confident this tenant will be able to comply with those a hundred percent.
Yeah, and I'm not concerned. I, as what I'm looking at and reading and all the, um, abavements and, uh, steps to be taken, I don't, and the lease itself, um, yeah, the concern doesn't strike me. Maybe in this instance, it's future. Um, question though with regard to, uh, ventilation with all, out, with odors and, um, potential allergies. Will a tenant on the first floor smell o- any odors or is the ventilation between the first, the residential floor is connected to this, uh, use? Or are they separate systems?
Entirely separate.
Separate systems, yes.
Okay.
Um, and just, you talked about the, uh, the steps you're taking for noise abavements. Um, actually, never mind. I'll pass on that. Commissioner Harrison, you had a question?
Yeah, I, I have a few questions. Thank you very much. Um, now, can you perhaps walk us through the waste management system, whatever you guys have, and has the health department weighed on any issues with that mechanism that you have in place?
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm very concerned about odors, any health issues that, that wa- waste may create.
Absolutely. So no issues with the health department whatsoever, um, as far as our waste management protocol. So there's nothing that is put into the sewer system. There's no drainage system there. Uh, essentially, any, uh, liquid waste, uh, is picked up immediately or mopped up, I should say, with the pet safe cleaning chemicals that I referenced earlier, uh, which are also a bio enzymatic digester. So that helps to break down the material as well as help with any odor that may come from that. And then any solid waste is immediately picked up. It's double bagged. It's placed in a separate receptacle, uh, and then is picked up accordingly. Uh, but there is no issue whatsoever within our facilities, uh, for odor, uh, from either liquid or solid waste or any violations that we've experienced.
Thank you. And then, so the solid waste, they would go into double plastic bags?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Francis?
I just had a couple of questions about the lease. Um, and, uh, attorney Fitzpatrick, maybe you don't know what this means. Um, it says the noise level shall be forty DBA to sixty DBC. Do you know what that means or what it's comparable to?
Mr. Riley does, thank goodness.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, give me one second, please.
Very long.
Uh, so sixty DBs, actually, uh, between forty and sixty.
Yeah.
Forty is at like a quiet office level is the comparison that I'm looking at on a
Okay.
chart. Um, normal conversation between people is fifty to sixty decibels. So it, it's, it's well below anything that's, um.
The, the DB means decibel. What does the A and the C mean?
I believe that's the decibel acoustic reading, uh, as well as within the facility, uh, when they went, so we had our acoustical engineer go out, and he actually measured the levels uh, within the second floor on occupied residences, so directly above the space. And already above the space without any dog barking or anything going on, uh, the DBA was between thirty-four and forty-two, and that was basically associated, uh, with the King's Highway road noise. So any noise that could possibly be heard within the space, uh, is actually less than that of what typically comes out of the road noise uh, from the cars passing by.
Thank you. And then in the odor noise, uh, the first sentence, the tenant shall not cause any unreasonably offensive odor to be admitted. Why does it say unreasonably offensive? Why doesn't it just say any odor?
I can't, um, explain how the landlord and tenant negotiated the lease. Um, I think the point that, that landlords use a reasonability standard, and that's part of the reason, that's, I assume is the reason it's there.
All right. And did we get a copy of the proposed zoning regulations?
Proposed?
You're proposing to change a couple of regulations?
Yes, I did. I submitted a copy. It's a one-sentence proposed amendment, yes.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I, I agree with. Mr. Riley? It needs, it needs a lot more detail. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Riley, what chart were you referring to? When you were talking about comparing with the, uh, the decibel?
That, that was part of a noise impact study that we had completed previously. Uh, I believe the, there was a seven-page acoustical study, uh, that was included within our materials that references, uh, to that and also ends with saying that there essentially would be no sound that is heard from any of the neighbors throughout the facility. So.
Okay, but the chart was, the charts in our materials?
The chart was not within the materials. That was something that our acoustical engineer that we've, uh, worked with on previous projects provided to us, uh, that talks about everything from power tools to normal conversation and quiet office.
Okay, is the chart just, um, like a reference chart or is it based on a?
Yeah, it was not site-specific. It's, it's kind of.
Okay.
It, it puts all noise types on, on this scale.
Can you just, um, submit that for the record? If we're going to rely upon it to some extent, it probably should be in the record.
I can take care of that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney Fitzpatrick. Excuse me. Any other, oh, Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, and, and thank you. I apologize if, if I did miss this in your presentation, but what is the maximum number of canines that you can host at the daycare?
Uh, so in this facility, uh, it is a hundred and seven dogs. That's divided across uh, three playrooms that are separated by both size and temperament. That would be at max capacity uh, at a facility that has been able, you know, to build a business to support that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, uh, just a quick follow-up, and then Commissioner Braun, what's the capacity for kennels?
Uh, so we always, uh, ensure that we have the same number of wholesale crates within the facility to support the dogs within the facility. Uh, and that's for reasons of feeding, nap time, and overnight boarding.
But how mu- what's the total capacity for, uh, boarding? How many dogs could you host?
Typically, boarding, so daycare is approximately seventy percent of our business. Uh, there are enough crates within the facility to support all dogs within there, but that's really focused on the feeding, nap time, uh, as well, you know, for those dogs that are overnight boarding, but it's typically less than thirty percent.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Braun?
So a hundred and seventy dogs can be there at once?
No, one hundred and seven.
One oh seven, okay. And how much staff do you have there? And where is the parking for the staff? Is that in the trademark complex or?
Yeah, so, uh, parking, uh, is provided within the parking garage. Uh, that's right across the way there from the facility. Uh, and as far as number of staff that we have on site at one time, typically on average, it's about six employees uh, that are there, and that also depends on the volume of dogs within the facility.
I can address the parking. Commissioner, this space was approved when, uh, the entire complex was approved as retail. There's forty-six hundred and forty-one square feet, which at two hundred square feet per space produces tw- a need of twenty-four spaces. Then you multiply it by point eight, which means there were twenty spaces attributed to this space. And we've accommodated twenty spaces as part of the build-out. And as you've heard, there's, uh, generally no more than six employees at any one time onsite. Um, the vast majority of the drop-offs and pickups are going to be these curbside. And they will all be interior, not on King's Highway. Um, and if there is a dog coming for the first time, maybe they're, they're walked in. You know, we've got am- more than ample spaces, given the fact that twenty spaces are attributed to the space.
Thank you. I have a, a follow-up. Um, I'm not sure what the, maybe this is for, um, for Jim. Um, what's the timeframe we have with the, um, the text amendment? And can we get some modifications that sort of incorporate some of the lease language into the text amendment, uh, before we review it? And the second part of that question is, can this be, this can be handled as a special permit without the text amendment, right? We don't need the text amendment to, if we wanted to approve this?
I'll answer the second part first. Presently, dog daycare, uh, is not a permitted use in this district. Um, so they're proposing to add it as a permitted use. So they would not be able to operate in the absence of the regulation amendment. The, you have, um, discretion, it, I, I, and, and I'll go back, and, and I'm sure Attorney Fitzpatrick will, will follow up. I, I believe his suggestion, if there's concern about, um, performance standards to be attached, uh, that his recommendation was to incorporate the, uh, the lease language that's offered in terms of decibel levels and, and so forth. Uh, but I'll let him elaborate on that, but, but from a timing perspective, um, once the public hearing is closed, you've got sixty-five days to, uh, to decide an application for zone, uh, regulation. once the public hearing is closed, you've got sixty-five days to decide an application for his own regulation amendment.
Commissioner Berman?
Couple of questions for the applicant. So in the noise control study that you submitted, there were two decibel level readings that were, I guess, the maximum that you had recorded. One was in Arizona, and the other was Minnesota, I think. And those were, I guess, one hundred and four decibels and a hundred and three decibels?
That was within the playrooms themselves.
Okay, yeah, so within the playrooms themselves, there were, these are facilities, other facilities that Dogtopia has operated in those locations, in which those noise levels were recorded in the playrooms, right?
Correct. So that was within the playrooms, not taken from without the playrooms, or any of the acoustical, you know, the acoustical envelope, or any of the measures that we take within there.
Yeah, okay. And that, but that was fewer dogs also, right, than you're proposing here?
So there were two different sets of dogs. So one was twenty to thirty medium dogs, the other was thirty to thirty-five small dogs. But that is approximately, that's the closest to what we have to our space. However, we also measured that same level within the space, and then how that noise transferred in a completely empty shell, nothing built out, to the space above.
And so, but the closest, the closest space you had? Sorry?
I was just gonna add, I recounted our plan, and we've got other applications before other communities, so I apologize for this, but our capacity here is actually ninety-six, not one oh seven. So, you know, that sub-thirty-five per room type of thing.
Okay, so that Arizona location was up to thirty medium dogs and thirty-five small dogs, so that's about sixty-five maximum, and then this would be ninety-six, okay. But the other thing, in the noise control study, the baseline noise, pink noise that was projected within the space was ninety decibels, right?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
The, the control noise that was used in the study for your space here was ninety decibels, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so is there a reason that a hundred and four or a hundred and five decibels wasn't used for the test?
So when they did it, so the twenty to thirty medium dogs and thirty to thirty-five small dogs combined is a larger room than what we have available on our space. So if our space maxes out at thirty total, not twenty plus thirty, not thirty plus thirty-five, it was a much smaller subset. On the verge of a smaller facility for one of our Dogtopia locations.
Okay, so the, so the space is smaller, so it'll accommodate fewer dogs?
Correct.
In that, in that playroom?
Correct.
Okay. I guess, you know, it seems as though, you know, there could have been a test done with a higher decibel level as the as the probe, right? But then, I guess, so that's all my questions for you folks, but then for Attorney Fitzpatrick, I guess, one question is, whether there's a potential for this to be a special permit use as opposed to an as-of-right use?
The way the commission wrote the T O D P regs, there are no special permit uses. There are purely permitted uses. My intent was not to, you know, create something new, but work within the framework that the commission had already put into place.
Okay, but if you're rewriting the regulation, you could write in a special permit use, in theory, right?
That's correct.
And then the last question, which I don't know whether it's for you, attorney, or for the applicant themselves, but it's whether overnight kenneling is integral to the business model of this tenant?
It's integral to the business model of Dogtopia. I can answer that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I have one final one, but any other commissioners have questions for the applicant? Attorney Fitzpatrick, one thing jumped to my mind. Again, this is more for future applications. I just soliciting, I guess, your opinion. Again, if we approve overnight boarding here, we might get other applications in other districts. Any reason why overnight boarding would be more appropriate for the T O D P as opposed to other districts?
The thing I pointed out earlier, Mr. Chairman, is the, you know, the fact that you've got the railroad station, you've got people traveling right at the station, it would seem to be especially advantageous for travelers, be it commuters or people traveling, to, on their way to the train, drop their dog, and on their way back, driving, and at the, at this station, picking up the dog. I thought that it made particularly good sense in the T O D P.
Thank you.
May, Commissioner, may I also just touch upon that?
Of course. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to leave that to, I didn't mean to leave that to just Attorney Fitzpatrick. I apologize.
Attorney Fitzpatrick specified that wonderfully. But one thing that I want to go back to, and we touched on it earlier, is the number one thing within our facilities is safety. Obviously, we are in a unique district here, and, you know, our pet parents, we really foresee being both those that are within the leasing community that is right there, within our same space, as well as the commuters. So, as I mentioned before, seventy percent of our business is daycare. However, when you need to travel, either just for one night overnight, or you're getting ready to go on vacation, you want to be able to board your dog at the same facility that they're used to, that they're going to either Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, or five days a week, whatever it may be. So from a, you know, a safety perspective, when we look at this, and we see our pet parents being very consistent within every facility, but most especially here, just because of, you know, the pet parent base that we have built in to our community, that it would almost be a disservice to them to have to then take their dog from the current facility that they're used to day-to-day and go somewhere else for overnight boarding. So from a safety perspective, we really offer this as an amenity and a convenience for our pet parents. We understand that people must travel sometimes, but it's certainly best executed when they're in a space that they are familiar with, and with other pups that they're also familiar with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other commissioners have questions for the applicant or Attorney Fitzpatrick?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few closing remarks. Can I make them?
Go right ahead.
At this point, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to review the legal standards for the two applications. First application is an amendment to the zoning regs creating the dog care use as a permitted use in the T O D P. The zoning commission has broad discretion under general statute, section eight dash two, as to types of uses it will allow as permitted uses. Connecticut case law states that, quote, "When enacting or amending its regulations, a local zoning authority acts in a legislative capacity, and it must therefore be free to modify its regulations whenever time, experience, and responsible planning for contemporary or future conditions reasonably indicate the need for change." That's the Malafont case, one fifty-five Connecticut, two oh five in nineteen sixty-seven Connecticut Supreme Court case. I submit the town of Fairfield, which I have termed a dog-centric community, will value the opportunity to utilize a professional dog care use. The second application is an application for a certificate of zoning compliance. In reviewing the zoning compliance, your task is then limited to determining whether the plan complies with the existing zoning regulations. I made the point of noting, as the commission already has itself, that permitted uses in the D O P are not special permit uses, as is the case in other business zones in town, or rather, a zone compliance. This is a newly constructed building, with the opportunity to provide the kind of acoustical measures that will ensure the proposed use will not infringe on the neighboring restaurant use, the upstairs residential uses, or any passersby outside the building. The landlord will make particularly sure that's the case. I've submitted the noise control plan for this particular site, which includes an acoustical analysis of the proposed use. The summary is that neighbors above are not expected to hear any Dogtopia activities. I included in the application packet a portion of the lease between my clients and the tenant, which includes specific noise and odor provisions, ensuring the proposed use will have no negative impact on any other tenant in the building. And again, it's in my client's best interest if there be no other impact on any other tenant. Should be noted that the dogs will be kept entirely within the lease space, with the exception of drop-off and pickup. The drop-off and pickup will all be done on the interior of the property, will not take place on King's Highway. There's no outside dog run associated with this use. There's considerable space to accommodate the use. For the reasons I've outlined, I'd request these applications be approved. Approval of these applications permits the occupancy of the property by an experienced, professional dog daycare tenant, providing a valuable amenity to neighbors, commuters, travelers, and to the community in general. Ross Ogden and Ari Koutavides of the Landlord Ownership Group, and Kayla Sealy and Jim Riley of the Tenant Ownership Group, and I would be happy to answer any questions. I would have no objection, Mr. Chairman, to the board incorporating what it sees fit from particularly section F of the lease I submitted, if the commission looks to provide itself with further protection in addition to the straight permitted use that I outlined in my submission. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Attorney Fitzpatrick. Any final questions for the applicant's initial presentation?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of this application. I see Ms. Harrigan has said, I don't see anybody in the chat, Ms. Harrigan, that you asked for, so I will make an announcement. Is there anybody, any member of the public wish to be heard for this application?
We'd just like to remind call-in users, if you are just dialing in, you have to press star six in order to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. Second call for anybody, member of the public that wishes to be heard on this application? Final call, any member of the public wish to be heard on this application? Hearing none, seeing anybody, close the public hearing portion of this application. I assume, Attorney Fitzpatrick, you're all set?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Attorney Fitzpatrick. Thank you, Ms. Sealy, Mr. Riley, for the application. I will close the hearing on this application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Next portion. Find my agenda, there it is. Next item for public hearing is zoning regulation amendment, application of the town and Town of Fairfield Plan and Zoning Commission to amend section two point four of the zoning regulations, proposed prohibition of cannabis establishments. Mr. Went?
Okay, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Jim Went. I'm the planning director. I am pleased to present this evening a series of amendments that we've been working on for a while. The first of which is this, the retail sale of cannabis. By way of background, this past legislative session, the Connecticut General Assembly adopted Public Act twenty-one dash one entitled "An Act Concerning Responsible and Equitable Regulation of Adult-Use Cannabis." It's a very lengthy bill that has a lot of parts to it, one of which defines cannabis establishments as "a producer, dispensary facility, including a medical marijuana dispensary, cultivator, micro-cultivator, retailer, hybrid retailer, licensed to sell both recreational and medical marijuana, cannabis food and beverage manufacturer, cannabis product manufacturer, and/or cannabis product packager." As you may know, retail sales are to be permitted of May of this year. This act requires that municipalities make an affirmative decision on how they want to regulate this. In the past, under the medical marijuana provisions, there wasn't a requirement, and this commission had taken the position that under two point four of our regulations, which is a regulation that says if a use is not specifically permitted, it's deemed to be prohibited, covered that, and we had one application for dispensary, and the commission deemed it not to be a permitted use because it wasn't specifically permitted in the regulations. Under this particular act, there's specific language that says the commission has to make an affirmative decision because failure or doing, taking no action, cannabis uses would otherwise be defined to be zoned as any other similar use. So therefore, the choice that the commission has is to amend the regulations to either define which of those types of cannabis establishments are permitted and regulated, or two, you can choose to prohibit them any and all types of cannabis establishments. And we had discussed this with the commission back last late fall, and it was the direction of the commission to set up a one-year prohibition. So what, the state is still defining the regulatory landscape under which licenses will be issued. They're still rolling out that process. So this provision is a regulation amendment that would specifically prohibit all cannabis establishments for a period of one year, unless otherwise extended by the commission. The proposed language is in the notice, and you have it. I will read it. It's cannabis, it's section two point four of the regulations, again, is entitled "Prohibited Uses," and presently says if a use is not specifically permitted, it's deemed to be prohibited. We are proposing section two point four point one, which defines the cannabis, which says cannabis establishments, including any related buildings, structures, and uses, are prohibited in all zones in the town of Fairfield, with the definition that I previously read. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the prohibition of cannabis establishments will expire or terminate, and we're proposing an end date of February twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-three, unless otherwise extended by the commission. So that is a brief outline of what this amendment entails, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission might have.
Thank you, Mr. Went. Any questions for Mr. Went? Commissioner Berman?
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Went. So this moratorium, if it were approved by the commission, would put us firmly in the majority of municipalities? Is that right?
Yes.
Was approved, denied, and had a moratorium?
Yes, I appreciate the question. I have, in the material that I sent to you, as on the state website thus far, fifty-nine municipalities have reported their regulatory status to date. Nine communities have adopted regulations approving some kind of cannabis uses. Fourteen municipalities have prohibited them altogether, and thirty-six have ventured into the moratorium realm as we are proposing.
Mr. Went, for the moratorium, does it have to only be a year, or could it be longer than a year?
That's entirely at the commission's discretion. When we had a planning discussion about this in the late fall, the direction we received at that time was to consider a one-year prohibition to see how the regulatory landscape shakes out. We left it open-ended. We said unless otherwise extended by the commission, you can outright prohibit it without an end date, and always come back and look at it, but what we were, the direction we received was to propose a one-year status, but that is entirely up to the commission on the length of that provision.
Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you. And if we do not, if we take no action tonight, marijuana retailers would be, they would be allowed to operate in Fairfield?
In the absence of taking a position to either define which types In the absence of taking a position to either define which types of uses are to be regulated and where, or a prohibition, then come May of this year, the uses are deemed to be, and I'm quoting the statute, presumed to be zoned, quote, "as if any other similar use." So presumably, retail sale of cannabis would be considered akin to any other retail sale, so it would be automatically considered a permitted use unless we take further definition of how to restrict it or adopt a prohibition.
Thank you.
Commissioner Braun?
So I think our thinking was, when we discussed this earlier, I think we discussed this at a planning meeting, that while the state is still considering its licensing provisions, we should do the moratorium and hold off until we know the landscape, the regulatory landscape we're working within, and become better educated on exactly what we would want and wouldn't want. That's my two cents.
No, and I agree with you completely. That's absolutely the discussion that was had and in the direction that we received from the commission.
Any other questions for Mr. Went? Hearing none, we can, unless there's anything else that needs to be said, we can move on to public comments. Anything else final? We'll move on to the public comment portion for this hearing. I don't see anybody listed yet in chat, but also I'll make the announcement. Is there a member of the public that wishes to be heard on this regulation amendment, this application? And as Ms. Harrigan had said, if you're calling in, I see at least one person calling in. Please hit star six, was it, Ms. Harrigan?
Yes, hit star six to unmute, but we do have two people now who have requested to speak. First is Kathy Haslett from Fairfield Cares, and then second, raising their hand is Tom Hennessy.
I was wondering if we had a raise the hand function. We have to figure that out, because that might be helpful when I have share, we shared screen. I can't see people. Ms. Haslett, floor is yours.
Thank you so very much. For the record, my name is Kathy Haslett. I am the Program Director, Coalition Coordinator for the Fairfield Cares Community Coalition. The coalition is the Town of Fairfield's local prevention coalition, and we were established back in 2009 as a youth and young adult substance use prevention coalition. So I wanted to state for the record that the coalition is drafting a policy statement that we'd like to share with you at an appropriate time, but we fully support the moratorium at this time to give you more time and give the state more time to think through the regulations. But we are planning to provide you with some information. We'd like to think of us as a resource to you to provide information on substance use, particularly as it pertains to you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and yeah, we'll look forward to the policy. That will be very helpful.
When, when would it be helpful to receive that?
Well, that's an interesting question. I assume certainly before the moratorium. In the coming months, I would think, I mean, because I would, it would be difficult because if the state regulations don't come out, we may extend the moratorium for the same reasons that we don't have, you know, regulations and state regulations in place. But I don't think there's certainly an urgent need to it, but if the moratorium is going to end February 28th next year, then, you know, I would think later this year, so we can get it on the agenda. Mid this year, later this year.
Thank you.
Mr. Went, any thoughts about timing?
No, I think, I agree with your statement.
Thank you. Mr. Hennessy, here he is.
Hi, guys. Thank you very, I'll be brief. I work with Kathy. I am a member of Fairfield Cares. I volunteer to help youth and young adults. And I just, I want to echo what she said. We are pretty much against this whole cannabis thing, and we're working on, you know, position statement, as Kathy mentioned, to get it to you. Any idea when we can figure out, when you guys, what, so you didn't actually just vote to extend the moratorium? There hasn't been a vote, right? So does the moratorium stay in place or no?
So we are, we will be voting on the moratorium, I suspect, at the next hearing, February, second Tuesday in February.
Okay.
This is the public hearing portion, or the application itself be presented to the, to the public and to us, public comments, and discuss it. So we'll be voting on the moratorium next.
So end of next month, we should plan on you guys voting to extend the moratorium or not. Is that correct?
Well, February, what, eighth, maybe, what?
Oh, probably February then. Okay.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman, there is no moratorium in place yet. What, what this proposal does is propose language that would prohibit the use for a period of a year. The commission has the discretion down the road to extend that beyond the year, but sitting here today, there is currently no prohibition. We are proposing the prohibition, which would likely be voted on at our next meeting, which would be February the eighth.
Okay, so just as a concerned citizen, if the commission doesn't vote on it, when can my kid go buy pot?
Retail sales aren't going to be permitted until May of this year.
Okay, so we have three, four months to get ahead of this, right?
Yes.
Should the commission act to approve the regulation we're proposing, it would ban it for a year regardless of the state's?
But if the commission doesn't move forwards, then it's going to become legal in May. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I'm asking.
That's fine.
All right, guys. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Any other member of the public wish to be heard for this application? Second call, any member of the public? Hearing none, I'll close the public comment portion for this application. Do you have a rebuttal, Mr. Went, or can we move?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That leads us to Item 4, Application of the Town of Fairfield Plan and Zoning Commission to opt out of state-mandated parking regulations.
Okay, Jim Went, Planning Director. For the record, again, by way of background, this was a very active legislative session this past year. Public Act 21-29 entitled "An Act Concerning the Zoning Enabling an Act: Accessory Apartments, Training for Certain Land Use Officials, Municipal Affordable Housing Plans, and Commissions on Connecticut's Development in Future." Also a lengthy act. We will discuss a narrow piece of that at this point. The act requires that zoning regulations, quote, "shall not require more than one parking space for each studio or one-bedroom dwelling unit, or more than two parking spaces for each dwelling unit with two or more bedrooms, unless the community opts out in accordance with the provision of Section 5 of the Act," unquote. By way of procedure, the opt-out process, which we are proposing tonight, requires a hearing and an affirmative vote of two-thirds of this commission, which would be five out of seven members, in stating upon the record the reasons for doing so, which I will elaborate on in a second. The second piece to that opt-out process requires, should this board opt out, it would require a second step, which the Board of Selectmen would also have to approve opting out also by a two-thirds vote. The reason we are proposing to opt out of this requirement is as follows. For the, for the large, vast majority of our housing development, we are going to meet or exceed, maybe the wrong choice of words, the parking standard. The zoning regulations presently vary for the number of parking spaces, depending on the zone you're in and the number of dwelling units. For one through four family homes, we require two spaces per unit. Now, the state requirements is you can't have more than two spaces for a dwelling with two or more bedrooms, so we're consistent with that standard. In the likelihood of somebody building a single-family or two-family house that has less than two bedrooms, I think is rather remote. So I think the, so in short, I think we're consistent with the, you know, the new policy as it is. Similarly, in our transit-oriented development zones around Fairfield Metro, we already prescribe fewer parking spaces than the statutory maximums. We have a standard that is the lesser of one space per bedroom or 1.25 spaces per unit, which is already less, which would be in compliance with the state-mandated prescription. However, we do have other potential for larger residential development that's not near transit in greater than four units. We haven't had one in a while, but, but we do have a designed residence district that requires two and a half spaces per unit in developments with five to ten units, or three spaces in developments of a little more units, plus an additional half a space for visitor parking. Now, these are developments that are not near transit, and, and while the majority of the parking for residential development is consistent with what's prescribed by these new maximums, was the commission's direction and belief that there are larger developments that aren't near transit that warrant a greater potential maximum for parking, and it's for that reason that we're proposing to opt out. This is, it's a little bit different action here, one that we've never encountered before. We're not proposing to adopt any language. It's not a regulation amendment. We're simply describing the reasons why and taking a position one way or the other of whether or not we should opt out of this prescribed maximum limit of parking for dwelling units. That is a brief overview, and I'm happy to respond to any questions that the commission might have.
Thank you, Mr. Went. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, I would just offer my voice in supporting opting out. I don't think a one-size-fits-all approach to parking is a good way to go about things. So I certainly think we should be in charge of our own destiny when it comes to parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Braun?
I echo that, and thank you, Mr. Went, for the wonderful explanation and detail you provided. Do we know what other towns are doing on this? Do we have any statistics on that?
I do not. There's not a website presently that I'm aware of, unlike the cannabis where the state is actively tracking that. So I don't have a good sense, like we do with cannabis. So short answer is no.
And a second point, really not a question, because I think we need to opt out, but it seems to me it's kind of a chicken and egg thing. If you want to reduce the use of parking and cars, you need to improve all kinds of transit options. And what comes first, we met with somebody, I met with somebody a couple of weeks ago who said, "You have to get rid of the parking first, and then the mass transit will come." That doesn't make sense to me, but I don't know enough about it. How, is there a way of finding a way to improve transit in town so that eventually there won't be the need to have so many cars congesting the streets, especially in the downtown areas? And how would we go about doing that?
Well, we've already addressed that to some degree with our transit-oriented development planning we've already done, and some of the regulations we've already adopted, and those regulations are, agree with what the state is setting as maximums. As a matter of fact, our maximums are even less than what the state is prescribing. So where we have, where we allow much greater density near transit, which in our case, you know, we are the trains, we already prescribe fewer parking. So the state mandate here with respect to parking, in my opinion, doesn't have a huge impact on Fairfield, but there are cases where it may be appropriate to have more parking than they're prescribing. So as, as you just said, and Commissioner Harrison said, you know, it's not a one-size-fits-all approach. You know, from a chicken and the egg perspective, you know, I think that, you know, the state has been talking for a long time about trying to grow where there's existing infrastructure. This commission has done a lot of planning around that and agrees, especially around our Transit Oriented Development Park in the metro center, where we have greatly expanded development opportunity, recognizing that it's transit-based. So I think we're, have done more than many communities have in that regard to recognize that. But nevertheless, we're proposing to opt out of this requirement. So I don't know if that was a
Thank you.
Good question. If I didn't touch on any of it, I'm happy to.
No, thank you very much. Very informative. Thank you.
Commissioner Berman?
Thank you. So, Mr. Went, it sounds like our community has sort of anticipated previously the direction in which the state is going, and that our parking requirements, except in certain, for certain large developments that are not accessible to transit, to mass transit, that we are actually in harmony with the state.
Yes, I agree. I think one of the, you know, one of the prefaces that this, you know, baked into this act is that the thought is that onerous parking requirements increase the cost or suppress the production of housing, while I think, again, we're ahead of that curve in terms of recognizing and have already recognized the reduction in the parking demand for those that warrant it. But that doesn't mean every development should be held to the same standard.
Any other commission members have questions for this application? Hearing none, we can move to the public comment portion of the application. Don't see anybody signed up for chat. Is there any member of the public listening that would like to speak on this application? For anybody that's called in, please hit star six to unmute yourself. Any member of the public wish to be heard on this application? Hearing none, and assuming no rebuttal, we can close this application. Any other, well, we can close the application. Next is the zoning regulation amendment, application of Town of Fairfield Plan and Zoning Commission to amend Section 6.0 zoning regulations, accessory apartments, and proposed opt-out of state-mandated language.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Jim Went, again, for the record, this is a little bit of a hybrid proposal. The very same Public Act that was referenced in our last hearing on off-street parking, Public Act 21-29, I won't read the lengthy title of the act again. Again, baked into this act is a requirement that zoning regulations allow for the creation of accessory apartments, and there's specifically prescribed language the communities must adopt to be in compliance. The act requires the local commissions to either amend their regulations to comply with the statute or opt out by January 1st of 2023. Any regulation that does not match or consist, is consistent with the state-prescribed language, after that date that has not opted out would default to the prescribed state language. Same opt-out process requires a two-third vote of this commission to choose to opt out and a follow-up vote of the Board of Selectmen, should you choose to opt out, of additionally a two-thirds vote. Having said that, the Town of Fairfield has a long history of providing for accessory apartments. Not, our accessory apartment regulations go back to 1986, and we have over 270 Not, our accessory apartment regulations go back to 1986, and we have over 270 apartments in inventory. This commission, most recently, at the urging of Fairfield Senior Advocates, amended the regulations in February of 2021 to make the opportunity a little easier for affordable or for accessory units. And we're pretty similar, we don't differ very much from what the prescribed state language is. In, in, for example, the, our regulations permit accessory apartments in single-family zones, but not in the Beach District. The statutory language would require an, an accessory apartment to be permitted on any lot that contains a single-family dwelling regardless of its location. We had a good discussion on this back in, in the late fall, in a planning discussion, and the commission agreed. So we're also, in addition to proposing to opt out of the state prescribed language, we're also proposing some amendments to our existing language to, to, to further increase the opportunity for accessory apartments. So what we are proposing is to extend the opportunity for an accessory apartment in the Residence B and C zones. Presently, those are districts that permit multifamily housing, and presently, the regulations prohibit an accessory apartment in those two zones. We are proposing that they be permitted on lots that only contain a single-family dwelling. And the difference there is, you know, if you have a two-family dwelling, there's no owner occupancy requirement, but if you have a single-family dwelling, you would be eligible for an accessory apartment. And the accessory apartment regulations require that an owner of the property live either in the apartment or the main dwelling, so that both units wouldn't be rental units that they own. There has, there is an owner occupancy requirement. That's not a change in the regulations. That's existed since the 1986 origination of the accessory apartments, but this proposal is expanding the opportunity to B and C zones. The statutory language also requires that accessory apartments be allowed in detached structures in any district. Our regulations amended in 2021 allow detached opportunity in the two-acre zone only. After discussion and part of this regulation amendment, we are proposing that that opportunity for detached unit be extended to the double A or one-acre zone and the R3 half-acre zone, but it was the commission's opinion that detached units should not be permitted in all districts, which is one of the departures from the, the state mandated language. So I will, in short, the plan, again, the Planning and Zoning Commission has a long history of supporting accessory apartment opportunities. We are proposing amended language to increase that opportunity, but because of the unique geography of the Beach District, for example, and other smaller zones, the commission is proposing to opt out of the state default language. To get a little more granular detail on what the regulation amendment proposal is, is again, it's adding the B and C zones for eligibility. We are proposing to eliminate the requirement for annual recertification. The application requires an affidavit from the owner that, that they understand that as the owner of the property, they have to live in either one of the units. And in the past, we have prescribed a, an annual recertification. We're proposing to eliminate that, which gets closer to the state mandated language, and we don't have a problem with that. And we are proposing in section 6.3.8, just for clarity, in addition to allowing detached units in the double A and triple A zone, in order to be eligible, the lot has to meet the minimum requirement of the applicable district. There cannot be an accessory apartment in the primary residence, so you can't have both a detached unit and an attached accessory unit. You're limited to a single accessory apartment. And we're also eliminating some language that was ambiguous, that seemed to imply that the commission would require a site plan review on an agenda. And historically, every, all of the accessory apartments that have been applied for to date have been approved through an administrative, over-the-counter process, so it's not subject to commission action, and we're just clarifying that in, in the language. So, so in short, we are, the, the commission is proposing to expand the opportunity in some respects for accessory apartments, but at the same time, we feel there's good cause to opt out of the state mandated language, and that's what this proposal entails, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Went. Any members of the commission have que, Commissioner Braun?
There's no connection between our expansion of our ADU and the option we have of opting out. They're not related to each other in any way. We're just using it as an opportunity to push forward with expanding the ADUs?
Yes, that, that's correct. If we, you know...
I have one request or one suggestion, which I don't know if it was raised before. There are some, some zones where a parcel of land might be larger than what's normally in that zone, that district. I'm thinking of the, the so-called Tucker property on Mill Plain Road. I think that's like quarter acre zoning. I don't remember what district it is, but that would not be allowed with our expanded regs, I don't think, to have ADUs. But is there a way of, when we do our modification, of doing it by acreage as well as by zone? In other words, if you have the acreage of a larger zone, you should be allowed to do the standalone ADU, because you have the... Do it? Any issue with that?
Well, there, there's no prohibition to do an attached, but you're suggesting in zones of lesser size than the R3 half-acre zone, that if they exceed the minimum lot size, then maybe they should also be afforded the opportunity for detached. That, that's something the commission considers. It's not part of this proposal, but if that's an amendment you'd like to see, we can, we can consider that. I don't know that we can make that part of this proposal, but we can certainly consider that. If you recall, you know, back in 2021, when for the first time the commission adopted a detached opportunity, there was discussion as to how broad that should be, and the, and the, the thought was, well, let's start with the bigger districts, and we'll see how, what kind of fruit that bears, and to see if it demands moving down to the smaller districts. So I would personally recommend a similar approach and see what the reaction is to the one-acre and half-acre zone, and if there's demand in other locations, then I think that might warrant, you know, future consideration.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Breman?
Thank you. Mr. Went, have you or Ms. Harrigan noticed any changes in applications or, or for zoning compliance or inquiries to your office since the February 2021 changes to the ADU regs?
We've had a handful of detached units, you know, not a huge number, three or four folks that have made the, you know, taken the opportunity to allow for a detached unit in the triple A zone. It hasn't been a huge number. There was one that was kind of a, an existing situation that was kind of waiting for that opportunity, but, but it hasn't been a huge number. I don't expect there to be a huge number. I think we're likely to see more increased applications in the single-family zones in the B and C districts, perhaps, for attached units than we will in the detached units, but that remains to be seen.
I think it also, you know, there might be opportunity for people who have detached pool houses to now come back and, you know, convert those to ADUs if the appropriate need presents itself. But again, I think Jim and I were talking about it not that long ago, and we think maybe we've had three applications, so people aren't beating down the doors yet.
Thank you. Procedurally, while we're expanding our ADU regulations, to the extent that it differs from the state regulations, would this be deemed an opt-out, which would require two-thirds vote here and Board of Selectmen concurrence?
Um, it would not require a two-thirds vote to amend the regulations as we're proposing, but the opt-out piece does. So I think in this case, you're going to need to take two separate actions, one on the regulation proposal as it's drafted, and that's, it would be a simple majority of the commission, or a majority, not a, a minimum of four votes, but to opt out does require the two-thirds vote of this board and the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen wouldn't be involved in the, whatever position the commission takes on the regulation amendment, but certainly on the opt-out. Thank you.
Any other member of the commission have questions for Mr. Went or Ms. Harrigan? Hearing none, we can move to the, excuse me, public comment portion of this application. And I see a, Mr. Lem Kuler has signed up.
Yes, hi. Herb Lim Kuler with Fairfield Senior Advocates.
Hi, good evening.
We had, we had submitted the recommendations as, as, as mentioned by, by Director Went in conjunction with Fair Plan and the Affordable Housing Committee, and we're certainly gratified by the response of the, of the commission and the, and the, and the support work of staff in terms of getting us to where we are. We're also supportive of the additional changes that have been proposed, and think it would really be of, of, of help to us in terms of providing more housing options for residents and, and helping to address the, the affordable housing issue that we have in particular. I did just want to add one comment, and that is, is that, yes, there has been, you know, some activity, but it's been slow as, as we expected, but we do plan to, to actively promote the regulations, the, the changes in regulations to our residents in conjunction with a community economic development staff and planning staff in the, you know, beginning in, in, beginning, early part of this year, actually have been waiting for this provision to be reviewed before we, we began that process. So thanks again to all of you for your work and, and support of this.
Thank you. Does any other member of the public wish to be heard on this application? Any other member of the public wish to be heard on this application regarding accessory apartments or ADUs? Hearing none, and again, assuming no rebuttal, I can...
Not, not by way of rebuttal, Mr. Chairman, but I just wanted to, to thank Mr. Lim Kuler and his, and the Fairfield Senior Advocates and others for their continued advocacy for this, and we welcome the opportunity for them to help promote the, this opportunity, and we thank them for their partnership.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Lim Kuler. With that, we can close this application. Brings us to our final item of the day, zoning regulation amendment, application of Town of Fairfield, Town of Fairfield Plan and Zoning Commission to amend section 2.12 of flood management and section 30.0 flood protection. Mr. Went?
I am thankfully passing the baton on this matter to, to Ms. Harrigan.
Ms. Harrigan, thank you. Ms. Harrigan?
Emmeline Harrigan, Assistant Planning Director, Director for the record. These zoning regulation amendments came about, I know that for some of you on the board who have been here for a bit, we recently had floodplain regulation amendments about a year and a half ago. These are a result of reviewing our regulations with FEMA Region One, who recommended certain changes. And so it's really, you know, for the most part, they're not sign, what I would say significantly substantive. They're just help bolster some of the existing language in terms of statutory authority, purpose for the flood hazard regulations, a couple of technical submittal requirements that they wanted to see within our regulations, the removal of boat houses within our high-velocity flood zone, and then some clarifications within our variance provisions. So this was a very kind of technical review to make sure that we had all of the minimum review requirements, supportive language, and some technical information within there. And this has been reviewed by our, and this, these regulation amendments were reviewed both by FEMA Region One and our state NFIP coordinator, and this is what they'd like us to adopt. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. Any member, any of the commission questions for Ms. Harrigan? As, as Ms. Harrigan said, it's really technical language that certainly needs to be reviewed, So seeing no questions from Ms. Harrigan, this application, is there any member of the public that wishes to be heard for these regulation amendments?
It's very exciting stuff, we know.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Any member of the public wish to be heard on these regulation amendments? Hearing none, assuming no rebuttal, we can close the application, this application. Mr. Went, Ms. Harrigan, thank you again for all your help in these, these amendments that we need to go through. As always, you, Mr. Wentz and Ms. Harrigan and the rest of your staff are very, very invaluable to this commission, so thank you very much for your hard work.
We appreciate those comments, Mr. Chairman, and we thank you for your time and attention.
That was the last item on our agenda, so close the meeting, and wish everyone a wonderful good night.
Thank you.
Take care.[1672.41]